It is 6:01. This is January 11, 2024, meeting of the Rome City Council will come to order. We do have a quorum. Looks like we're missing Mrs. King. And it looks like we don't have a pastor for our invocation, so I'll go ahead and do it. Dear God, gathered here for the Rome City Council meeting, January 11, 2024. Look over us. I ask for common sense and good judgment, doing the best for our residents. And watch over us and take care of us with the upcoming cold, cold weather. We've got a number of families that are hurting, and I don't think it will be very easy for them, so come for them the best you can. Be safe for everyone. And, and yeah. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public comments. The council's not permitted to take action or discuss any comments made to the council at this time concerning an item not on the agenda. However, they may make a statement of fact regarding the item or policy. They may also ask if the item be placed on a future agenda or direct the city administrator to contact the individual to address. Public comments require the speaker to submit the sign-up form to the city secretary prior to the meeting, are limited to three minutes, and the form must identify each subject the speaker intends plans to present. There will be no yielding of time to another person. Engaging in verbal attacks or comments intended to insult or slander any individual shall be caused for removal from council chambers. And, um, public comments, please?
Ms. Wilson?
My name is Joanne Wilson, live at 240 West First, here in Rome. I have been involved with our city for many years, look at the gray hair, council, mayor, and senior citizens, and all of them working with. Having been born here and raising two daughters here, you can see why I care. For the past few years, I have heard negative things about all former council, of which I was probably on some of those. But I don't recall anyone speaking of things in the past that should have been done by anyone who lived here during that. And what is even worse, after all the time-consuming research on Rome, I do not recall anyone referencing how much or how little the city's budget was. I know at one time, and thank heavens I was not on the council then, we could not make payroll. There was a problem, too much of our precious, small amount of money had been spent. Council, you can wipe out that debt by taking action immediately, not just with words, but actually doing something for our city, such as moving forward on improvement to our West Side Sewer Plant, an actual schedule to replacing clay pipes and getting our system okay. Water, thanks for extending our contract with Walnut Creek until '09. But is there a contingent plan in place in case for some reason Walnut Creek doesn't have water? Apply for appropriate grants and services. Do not just talk about what is available. Help the administrator, offer your help in seeing what is available and in completing applications. Along that line, show the citizens when they can expect decent roads. Council, you must keep your eye on City Hall at your job and make sure our financial records will allow for a timely audit next year. It is our attendance. It is our attendance what you want, or do you even know what it is at City Hall? You are the ones to make things happen. Offer your advice to the mayor. Do not ignore her. Pay close attention to what our administrator is doing. Help her if you can, are her actions benefiting the city?
Lisa Wilson?
I am reading this for my daughter Lisa Wilson. These are her comments. Topics are the senior building, Rome Veterans Tree Lightings, and the new social media page. We had a senior group in Rome forever, an amazing group, some still with us, others have passed away. Lunches and other activities, Domino's comes to mind, were held in the red building until COVID closes down. Fast forward to when COVID hit and the building was closed immediately with senior appliances and pots and pans still in there. Country was full of canned goods and refrigerator and freezers were full. But seniors were out in the cove. The nice folks at the Rome Community Library allowed us to use their activity room for a monthly potluck lunch. The citizens use their own money. The city is not involved. We fund ourselves. We meet once a month and truly have a wonderful time. We have been doing this for the last two or three years. We are truly blessed to have local attendance as well as around the community and a good group of veterans. This is a win-win situation for us all, as well as the library getting points for community involvement. Recently, it has been mentioned that the city could put aside $30,000 for building repairs and the seniors could use the red building again. Remember, you can use this money to help with our city's urgent needs, sewer, water, roads. There would be an expense to utilize this facility. Also, why were the citizens told previously that it would take a million dollars to bring the building up to code? And now it can been done for $30,000? Before we start renovations, why don't we see what the citizens really want and if they will attend and participate? Do not refer to the previous survey for information. A new social media page has become available. The city created by a council person implying the info out there is incorrect. I disagree. The majority of our info out there is factual and was obtained from open records. Lastly, a shout out to the Rome Veterans Association for the wonderful annual tree lighting event and to City Hall for their festive decorations. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Sam Easton. I live at 1107 Mount Lane. Um, first of all, I don't believe $30,000 will ever bring it up to code. But $30,000 would make it, would make it habitable. Um, I came to speak tonight on procedures. Um, agendas, agendas for the council meetings really need to be on something that with, that the voting members are going to take action on and need to know. Agendas are not for making public discussions, and it's no place for stump speeches. You voting members, when an agenda item comes up, you can act on it. You can make a motion, you can second it, you can vote, we can move on. We don't have to listen to stump speeches.
Anyone else? Okay. Um, announcements, City Hall will be closed on Monday, January 15, Martin Luther King Day. And January 17, 2024 is the first day to sign up for a place on the ballot. And I believe that the city administrator has also posted on the city website for a workshop scheduled for this coming Friday, uh, January the 19th. And then, of course, we've got another council meeting, January the 25th. Uh, we'll go to the, the council have any announcements? Okay. Um, we'll go to the consent agenda. Um, the third item, if the council has no objection, I would just like to get a little bit more information about that. If I can take it off the consent agenda. Thank you. So, um, approval of council minutes, December 14, 2023. Resolution 2024 ZR1, naming the official newspaper of the city of the, for the, I'm sure that means for the 2024 calendar year. So, need a motion on those two items?
Make a motion to approve number one and two on the consent agenda.
Second?
I have a comment, then I'll second.
Go make your comment.
The, I just want to point out that the Wise County Messenger, according to their website, has a circulation of 3,900. I'll second approve.
All in favor? Very good. Okay, then number three is the approval of Texas Municipal Retirement System buyback option. And I believe that is for the city administrator. Just like some more details and what's involved with that and, you know, if we've got a cost that's going to come to us and how that, how that works.
I guess I don't understand the questions. This was discussed in executive session fairly extensively when we went through the review process. There is no cost to the city. It's only a cost to the people who intend to buy back the time.
So it's several people?
No. It could be several people. However, it's unlikely that anyone else will take advantage of that other than myself. There are several people in our city that could potentially buy their monies back, but I have been told that they are not interested necessarily in that plan. So, um, this was something that was discussed in my contract negotiations and executive session and approved by council.
I think we must have gone over it, and I missed it. I'm sorry, but that's why I just wanted some clarification. All right.
I looked this up on the webpage today for the Texas Municipal Retirement System. And yeah, it's basically a 5% buyback. They want to transfer their retirement funds from one city to another, or one organization to another.
Okay. All right. Motion?
Make a motion to approve the TMRAS buyback option.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Monthly staff reports and board minutes. Do we have any comments on that?
I would direct council to the new format for those reports. We are trying to put those into a more cohesive, one, one running document, if you will, instead of several separate reports from the departments. It would also be our hope that we would post these on our website in case people have a desire to read those as we go through and we could maintain them there for a period of time.
All right, we'll go to regular agenda. Um, first two items, I'm kind of, I'm going to kind of put them together. Uh, the last council meeting, the council did approve a contract with Spartan Energy. Um, for, it was a nine-year contract for electric service at 0.81 cents per kilowatt hour. Um, I did some checking afterwards, and we may need to bring Mrs. Ty in on this as well, because I understand that you've also, you had something on here about electric providers.
I would like to just put number 11 with one and two. We can just bulk all the electric.
That's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm thinking. Um, but anyway, so I did some checking after, I, of course, I submitted the request to put it in for reconsideration. And so I did some checking and I went back to TXU. Um, our contract is good until November 1st of 2024. Currently, we are paying a rate of 0.41 per kilowatt hour. And we're, we're averaging right at 2 million kilowatt hours per year. Um, I did talk to our representative, and, um, they will offer us a rate on a five-year contract of 0.62, which is considerably less than the contract that you all had approved. Um, overall, with the 2 million kilowatt hours per year, we would be paying more for the NRG contract with Spartan Energy. Um, we'd be paying about $40,000 more a year uh, to go with them rather than just staying with TXU and doing a renewal. As I say, this doesn't come up until November. And what'd you find out, Ms. Ty?
So I just Googled representatives that, that go out and look for energy contracts, kind of like, um, energy broker or somebody. So they sent me a proposal, and y'all can, I'll pass it out to y'all.
Because I think that's what Mr. Bigby's firm does. It's a, it's an energy broker.
Yes. And on the back, it has three different companies, and these were the cheapest companies, but it was, and it says, I had to call him and ask him because it says 6.45 cents, but he said it's the same as 0.64, kind of like the 0.81. It's all the same. Um, I don't know why they, they confuse us like that, energy, electric companies. But, um, this one, the lowest one that we got was, I mean, six cents. So, I mean,
Lower than 0.62? Or was it 0.64, did you say?
How many years is that for? You said five years?
It's a five-year contract.
So five years, it's 0.60, about the same.
Okay.
Did everybody, did everybody get a copy of this? So anyway, that would be an energy broker that could actually look at the different companies and determine which one's cheapest. Are you with Spartan? Okay, okay. Yes.
Go ahead, if y'all have questions. Because there's some stuff that I would like to say with those quotes from TXU. Was it in writing? Did they give you it as a?
I got a proposal from her. Yes, I did.
Um, am I able to look at that proposal and show you guys?
Um, I'll refer you back to the city attorney. I forwarded everything to him.
Okay. The reason I ask is because kind of what I showed in the first proposal and presentation um, is there's, you guys have about $77 of junk charges from TXU. Um, so if you were to add that into your rate, it almost raises your rate about two to three cents. So if you think about it, you're getting a 6.2 when they're really, they, you have a 6.2, but you're really paying an 8.2 now.
So what are the junk charges on the bill?
Yeah, I'll show you.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got the last two bills right here.
I have, I have them up as well. So if you go to page seven of the bills, and I, mine are from, what month is this? I believe in June, so there could be a slight like cent variation of the junk charges because they're always changing. Um, so for example, on page seven of your TXU bill, it should be for 645 Country Road. Do you see that one?
Okay.
Is that the address?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, everything below your base usage charge, what was your base usage in kilowatts? If you'd like, I could show you.
13,160.
Okay, perfect. Everything up below that, all that dollars below that, is a junk charge. So everything below that dollar figure is a ju, a charge that is passed through to you.
That's not the delivery?
No, ma'am. I'll show you delivery on the bill if you'd like to see.
Yes.
Okay.
The distribution service charge is the only one under electric service distribution? Oh, okay.
Base, base charge, near charge should not be on it.
Okay.
They're going to change slightly. If this one goes down to two, so you have an average of $44 extra dollars a month. The high of the, the highest I saw quickly just looking through.
Is that per meter or, so we have how many meters?
29 meters. An extra, 29 times $44, I love you paying an extra $1,000 a month. So that's the whole point. So you might see kind of like a lower rate, especially through those other chargers or other companies as well. You just don't know what's actually in the contract. So unfortunately, back when the TXU one was signed, if it was signed through our company, it would have been a clean four-point whatever we got you at that time.
So this one has the utility delivery cost. It's averaged, so I'm assuming it's going to change, it's going to fluctuate? Yeah.
I'm a business person, I'm sorry, guys.
So they've, they've got the graph, the graph down here, how much we use, but then they have 5.29 for the utility delivery cost, but they said that that was the same no matter what utility company.
Yes and no, is the right answer. Because you could go through on board and get that, um, but we could go through and reset every year in City of Rome, which probably hasn't been done in a while, and lower it back to a 0.29. If there's like a pay that.
Is that all included in your contract?
So, okay, what was the question?
Is that all included in your contract?
Which part?
The part about none of these other fees would be assessed?
Yes, ma'am. So if you go on the first page, you'll see where it gives you the rate that we agreed upon. Um, and then it will say plus zero recurring base fees or base charges. And it's good, it's good to do due diligence and go look around 100%. It's just hard online because they're going to want to give you the nicest clickbait rate they possibly can, and you end up coming back, and it's like, wow, I signed a 6.2, but I'm paying a 9.3.
So this 8.2 that you, well, this is just one of them.
Yeah.
I don't know which, which one, but does that include the delivery cost also?
No, man. Yeah, so you'll see that plus that five cents or whatever.
Right, okay.
But I cannot quote that because it changes month to month.
Right.
So if, uh, if a, a certain building that was pulling 13,000 had a different demand charge on it one month than the next month, that's where that will fluctuate.
Um, relative to TXU, uh, did they indicate what their charges are if we add or delete a meter?
It would, they would still, uh, they would go up to, and the proposal, as I understood it, the proposal goes up to 3 million. She said, we'll, we'll average at 2 million. And there is no charge to add another meter to it. It would be whatever the rate is.
How much are you allowed to add?
I didn't ask that specific question, but she had counted on, you know, we'd have some, uh, some increase as far as development.
Yeah, so with ours, where the largest that you could add is 25%. Uh, I, I know that for being around different companies.
She planned on being here and she couldn't, she wasn't able to make it.
No worries.
Um.
Another thing, do they have a, a blend and extend option in their contract?
I'm not sure what blend and extend is.
Blend and extend is within our contract that if between now and the nine years that I locked you guys in for, the market drops, I come, I get on the next possible city council meeting, and I lower your rate.
Okay.
That is something that a provider will not do for you because they lose money.
Okay, the last meeting, Mr. Atkins was not here, and I have talked to him when I got this information, and he's not here tonight. I'm hopeful that the council will at least postpone this for a final decision until we've had an opportunity to run it through Mr. Atkins.
I move we postpone this to the next meeting, so we can confer with our legal counsel.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Did, can I ask a quick question? Okay.
Yeah.
The, it was a one, an 8.2 that we, or an 8.1 that we agreed upon last month. Um, I will say it has increased to an 8.2 in the, the time we have.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to postpone until we've got the next council meeting, when we've got legal counsel. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bigby. Okay. Um, number three, Texas Water Development Board Financial Assistant Application. Um, there's a deadline coming up on that, and I know that Mr. Loftus and Mrs. DeGan, we've talked about it at council meetings. Um, but there is, for the financial assistant applications, there is a deadline of February 1st. And so I didn't know if you were looking at that as far as maybe trying to put in for something to get some help.
Still have a meeting scheduled for the 19th to discuss this? Okay, then, um, my understanding is that application can be kind of like a bare bone skeleton application when you submit it to them. And so, uh, I would think whatever comes out of our meeting on the 19th would be what we would spend.
And as we've discussed at a previous meeting, we do have to change the state's water plan, which they are in the process of doing. So we have contacted Mr. Shaw with the Upper Trinity groundwater conservation district to get on that plan because if that plan is not amended to show projects for Rome, the TWDB grants are not going to fund them.
All right. Um, yeah, a couple of things I want, I put on the agenda just to get a status update, but we've talked about it and then never mentioned it again. Um, okay, so that's not going to require any, we'll just talk about it, I guess, at your workshop. All right. Uh, number four, buy well sign damage. Um, I've noticed some stuff on social media, and I also went out to BuyWell to check out the, uh, damage out there the day before Christmas Eve. And when I asked for this to be put on the agenda, I had a couple of ideas for solutions to try to get it fixed, but it looks like, according to what was posted also on social media, that Jesse and Chris and Craig and Jesus Jr. have gone out and got it cleaned up, and according to the picture, it looked pretty good, so.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
So I have a question about that because I originally asked for that to be put on the agenda. So is it Jesse, would you mind addressing?
Uh, yeah, last time we spoke about the BuyWell entry sign, y'all recommended we get quotes to address not only that one, but, well, we did that one, but we have major issues in Ellison Trent and Crown Point, they all need acid supply. So I am still waiting on quotes because the holidays were in, everybody's just pushing and pushing.
So the pictures we have in front of us?
It was just washed down with repeating one.
So the picture on the top is prior to the wiping and the picture on bottom, so.
And the thing I was going to get a quote on is remove all the stickers off, paint it white on both sides so it matches, and then get new stickers. To, that's.
That's what I wondered about, if we could do stencils on it.
Yeah.
It's got a coarse, um, the, it's not smooth, it's very coarse.
Uh, it's pretty smooth. It's like aluminum.
I know it's aluminum, but the, the outside felt coarse to me.
Oh, yes, yes, the stickers are like,
Yeah.
They pretty much melted to it. That's,
Yeah.
But that's, that's what I wanted to ask too, is do we still want me to get? But that's, that's what I wanted to ask too is, do we still want me to get quotes to actually fix that and...
I think that's something I'd like for us to talk about on our January nineteenth workshop. Because what is the city's responsibility for each of those when we're talking about multiple? I know my neighborhood as well, as of signs age and our subdivisions' age, things happen to them.
It adds up quickly and, and the up maintenance on it on the long term. I mean, you got a flagpole there in Bywell, it's fallen over, I just saw that the other day. The Ellis one, all the mortar needs are re, are redone, I'm sure that's not gonna change.
Right, right. So thank you so much for your team's work to make this look presentable for the community and then we'll look at what we can do in the future moving forward. Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, number five, Bywell Tech Dot traffic light at Alliance and 114. It seems like it's been months ago that we did talk about, I believe before, I'm not even sure if you guys were still on the coun- were on the council at the time. Um, but we did talk about the Tech Dot, the, a possible traffic light at Alliance and 114. The city cannot do anything about it, but in the meantime, I have seen stuff on social media that somebody said, well, I'm, I'm talking with a council member and they are working closely with Tech Dot, which I don't know anything about that and you know how things go on social media. But I'm wondering at the very least, I noticed that some people, they put up their text messages that they had forwarded or email messages that they had forwarded to Tech Dot. And Tech Dot has basically come back and said, yes, we're looking at it very seriously and we'll let you know. And I'm wondering if we could not send something in support from the city of Rome. We can't, Tech Dot doesn't do anything fast and we can't do anything to, to, to move them. But I'm just, I'm thinking that maybe just throw our hat in.
Yes, I have reached out to Chief Debus about this also after the last fatality on 287. So it kinda goes hand in hand. Can you give us an update of what you've heard from Tech Dot and the responses that you've received?
Well, there's been no update. We have passed along all of our crash data for that stretch of highway. We repeatedly voiced our concerns to the engineer and the workers, um, not only there but also at 287 and 4838 after the last fatality there. We are requesting and vigorously requesting, I've been to meetings in Wise County with them to talk about things. Um, but it comes down to funding through the state and what they're able to get. Tech Dot does not move quickly, other than to clear roads. I will give them a shout out for clearing roads when it ices. But getting lights put in and things of that nature, it doesn't move very quickly and there's no way to make them go faster, unfortunately. I'm sorry, I wish I had better, I wish I had better news.
But I do wonder if we can pass some kind of resolutions and some kind of letters signed by all the council members.
Yes ma'am, we can certainly do that, yes. Yeah, I mean, we can do that.
So that's something that could be prepared? Is it something that could be prepared and then, uh, we vote on it, uh, on the nineteenth?
Yes, I would prefer the twenty-fifth, just because the nineteenth's going to be fairly subject-specific. But yes, I can have the letter drafted, you all can look at it prior to and then bring it to the meeting and determine how you want the signatories to go on.
Thank you, at least it'll be something to put a little weight behind the multiple requests from individual citizens and the chief.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Um, okay. Uh, just wanna get an update on the community development block grant status. Um, we got that a couple of years ago for about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And I believe it was finally decided that it would be used to, uh, update and upgrade the well six. And I think at some point there were supposed to be bids going out and we're a couple of years down the road, where are we with that?
So the engineer is still working on that particular project. Some things have been in fluctuations since I came on a year ago. My understanding is he has an application that he's preparing to submit to TCEQ in order to get permission to re-dwell and to rehab the well. And then after that, all of the bid letting will go on.
So we do have engineers working on it at this time?
They've been working on it, but yes, they are working on it now.
All right, good. Um, okay, we wanna talk about grants. Um, I just went online and that, I mean, I have, I do this periodically, looking for a variety of grants. And I got something, a circular here for actually harvest of rainwater that's being done by Upper Trinity. Um, TCEQ, USDA, rural development, Upper Trinity grants. And I'm wondering where we are, if that's not a possibility, that we can't be looking into these grants? With the number of things, I mean, basically our big priorities are gonna be water and the sewage.
Yeah, my understanding was that was our whole purpose of the nineteenth meeting. And so I'd be happy to discuss that further at that point. I do, I can tell you though, from, uh, looking at, for instance, mainstreet.org and the Texas support for that, a lot of these organizations require a full-time employee to manage a grant. Just wanna throw that out there.
I will also say that there are numerous grants that we can apply for, but at current, our staff does not have the capacity to spend the time drafting the grants. There are multiple pages, multiple submittals, they require a tremendous amount of documentation. And if we are going to pursue that, while Grant Works helps us identify those, they don't necessarily write the grants for us. And that is becoming a challenge with everything else that we have going on within the city. So I know there's been questions at the council level and questions in the community level. Grants are always an opportunity for this city. It's not as if we don't look at those as an alternative from which to fund things. However, it does require a considerable amount of front-end work and a considerable amount of reporting. And so it's not, it's never free money. It always comes with some sort of a responsibility attached to it. And from several of the conversations that Mr. Loftus and I have just recently been to, I think he has a new understanding of just exactly how difficult it may be to obtain those.
I'm gonna agree with you there and say that grants, you know, are kind of like a supplemental income, right? We need to have the funds in place for our everyday things, our needs. Um, but we can't rely on grants for the things that are necessity. So I think spending our time focusing more on what the neighboring communities and those meetings that are happening about water, um, is a better use of the staff time.
Agree with Councilmember King. I also, I would think, maybe I was misunderstood this, but I thought that Grant Works did write the grant for the community block grant.
So far, what they've given me is about a forty-page document of information that needs to be filled out and answered questions. And at current, I haven't had a chance to pick it up. We have too many other things that are going on at the moment. So if Grant Works does do that type of a project, they have not offered that service. So it was something I would have to inquire on.
Yeah, I mean, I thought they were the ones that walked around the neighborhoods and interviewed people and I thought they did all the work, do you remember that?
I do.
In your neighborhood.
I did. Mrs. Wilson, you were mayor when that got, when that went through.
So CDBG grant is a community development block grant program. And Mrs. Wilson is correct, if we have those outstanding when we go to apply again, they do rate us and you will lose points if you currently have one that you are in process or facilitating, which we do have. These are some of the things that I have discussed with our representative. And, um, Mrs. Wilson, it may have changed slightly. I do think they are helpful. Grant Works is a great tool for us to have, but it's not quite as plug and play as I had hoped it would be.
So that's where we are with that. Okay, uh, number eight, traffic management. Um, I'm not sure what everyone's schedules are. However, um, we've got a massive congestion coming off of two-four, or 114 and 287. And I think we're gonna have even more once the QT opens. Um, with that folks getting off at that BC Rome exit. As it is right now, it looks like a large number, a large part of that traffic is coming off of either 114 or 287 and then cutting through, um, on Main Street and then crossing over on BC Rome to, to go on with the continuation of 114. Um, some afternoons, I think Mrs. Wilson said she got caught in it one day and it was, it was forty minutes just to get from the exit over to, you know, to get home. And so, um, I'm hoping maybe we can put our heads together. Also, the U-turners at, um, uh, right there in front of City Hall where they turn around and go to the Dollar Store, I just happened to be standing in the door a week ago yesterday. And, uh, I mean, it was the screeching of tires and, and I saw the little car making his U-turn and then the pickup truck had to slam on his brakes going west to keep from hitting the guy. Um, so wanna look at U-turns and see if there's, I mean, maybe your traffic, you've been traffic, I don't know what your background is with law, but, um, you know, maybe we can put our heads together. Uh, you know, coming in, uh, also from thirty-four, thirty-three to get it school time and, you know, getting ready, people going to work, going home. Um, I'd noticed somebody had called me and said, what's going on over on, uh, you know, that service road where people were actually getting off in the grass and driving around there in front of, um, JTS trucks? So, um, and I noticed this last week, well, since kids have been back in school, um, actually. It was just a couple of days ago, I just happened to be outside and I watched the traffic, you know, and they, they do come down Old Mill, you know, to try to alleviate some of that, which I don't have a problem with that except they're doing it the time of day when we've got school buses dropping kids off. But anyway, my question is, is maybe we can put our heads together and, uh, get an officer out there and try to direct traffic and keep that traffic moving during particular times of day.
As a note, they cut through Morris Street too.
I don't have a problem with them cutting through, other than the fact that we do have kids on, you do on Morris too.
Yeah, I have a problem when they're driving forty-two.
I have two things, the big thing, Tech Dot is, I know they're, I think we're in their five-year plan with this. For us to really mess with those exits, there's not anything we can really do, it's all gonna be on Tech Dot, so...
Can't even, you know, manage it temporarily. Because I, I went out, did you go to the thing that they had last summer down at the church and all of that? And, um, you know, it, it looks like a great plan, it is a really, really great plan. And they said it would be probably, uh, twenty-twenty-six when they'd get started on it, but they don't have the financing for it yet. And to be honest with you, with the size of the project, I would be skeptical if it would be done in my lifetime. So, um, I don't know, I was just thinking something that we could do to alleviate what's coming through Rome. And I don't think it's gonna get better with the QT coming online.
I don't think putting an officer at working those intersections or directing traffic is a good use of resource and it's, tends to cause more problems than it does alleviate things. Um, just based on those two, it, exits and intersections, I don't think putting an officer is doing good.
And if they even thought about that, that would be an overtime, it wouldn't be just somebody on duty doing that.
So, we're not even gonna consider it then.
Well, to that point, if you, if you put somebody, if you take an officer, we have one officer on the street at a time and you take him and you put him out there and let's say for a couple of days, he's actually able to manage traffic flow at, at the U-turn or at 114 where it exits to Main Street. And then he's not there the third day, the phones are gonna light up with complaints. Once you provide a service, they are absolutely going to expect that every day because that's been my, that's been my, uh, traffic experience in the past. And so if we are going to implement something, we need to think long-term and how that's gonna affect us.
Well, this is also a policy question. And that's something that council needs to be mindful of when they're making changes to what we're doing as far as enforcement is concerned. To the casual observer, that does seem like, to the mayor's point, an obvious or logical response. However, to Chief Debus's point, once you start putting an officer out there to direct that traffic either at a school or at an intersection, then yes, that is an expectation that you have provided it once, you will provide it again. I have also had residents come in, they're talking about enforcement along 287. We don't have funded enough officers to cover all of these spots from that area. So if council wants to view this through a policy lens, that's really where you all need to give direction to staff and let us implement it. It's not a short-term issue and it is not something that we just discuss within a five-minute frame at this meeting. So you all would need to consider that and determine what policy direction you're looking to give staff as it relates to enforcement on the highway, enforcement in the neighborhoods, enforcement for flow-through traffic. Just by the given nature of the city of Rome and where we sit at the crux of two highways, we are going to have pass-through traffic. This is part of the growth I have been discussing for the fa- past year that I've been here. This is not a new surprise to us. It is only going to continue to get worse as the homes grow in void, as the next D.R. Horton development comes on and further on down the line. This is just the nature of what Rome is going to be for the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. This is where you are, the crossroads to the metroplex, and you are going to have this traffic.
And as far as, somebody sits in him at 287, um, years past, you know, when there was an officer out on 287, traffic immediately slows down. And I did see someone, uh, one of our Rome police cars, uh, it was just a couple of days before Christmas. I went to Haslett and he had a, actually a semi up in the far-left lane where it turns into Stevens or whatever that is. And he had his lights on behind the guy and both of them were stopped. So, um, they do spend some, obviously they do spend some time on the highway.
We have several citations that are written on the highway on a routine basis. Uh, we do pay attention to that as well as what's going on on the cut-through traffic. It's just finite resource and where can we put them for the hours that they are on duty?
I think for this point, the best thing that we might do is just be mindful of that when it comes to budget time next year. And when we see staffing requests from the police department, um, it's also more an issue, you can't just put one person because of the crossovers in those locations.
I think it would take two or three.
It would take a couple at that one and a couple at this one, at least, in order to keep them safe.
Believe me, I'd love to have five motor officers out there working that. It would slow it down and we, yeah...
To Mr. Schumak's point, if y'all'd like me to put together a proposal for two motor jocks, I'd be happy to do that.
Chief Debus, actually I have a couple of ideas, I won't talk about them tonight, but I would like to discuss them.
I'd be happy to hear them and my office is always open.
Okay. All right, let's move along. Number nine, community center electronic equipment malfunction. And if we've got backup, I did bring an extra phone of Mrs. My's loan to me, so we have a recording on that. I just was curious, when it came out that we weren't gonna have a recording of the meeting, um, what was the malfunction?
I'm not an electronics expert, so I don't know the answer to that question, but when we went back to load it into YouTube, there was no recording on the system. So, I don't know what happened from the interim of the meeting to the posting, and that's what I emailed to council. So, I understand that there's been some conversation on social media as it relates to this as well. I have pulled the law as it relates to an elected governing body of a home rule municipality that has a population of 50,000 or more, that they shall make video or audio recording of reasonable quality. Rome has also gone the extra step and passed an ordinance in 2021 that says that there's, that we shall keep written minutes and there shall be a digitally-recorded, uploaded to the city's YouTube account and kept for 90 days. This ordinance probably needs some review, because there's no way that I can guarantee, unless we have a third-party vendor for this particular service, I can't guarantee that these are going to be recorded every time. There may be a hitch in something, we may have a mouse who gets into some of the wiring or chews on something. So, a "shall" is you shall do it every time. A "may" is you will try your best. So, we've gone a little further beyond what the state law requires for our type of a municipality, so there needs to be some direction on this ordinance as we go along as well.
I would think that it needs to say "or," either or, because that's what state law says, correct?
You're not required to record these from that angle, because you are not a population of 50,000 or more. You are a type A general law city, so you need to be able to produce minutes from your notes, and that is the threshold of your requirement for the city of Rome. We do go the extra mile, which is very nice, and we have it on go-to meeting, and we do have a YouTube channel that we post all that to. And we actually have several people who may not watch it on the night of, but they do go back and watch it. So, that's great, because it helps with communication. And frankly, I'm very sad that we did not get that meeting recorded, because that was really, if you recall, in our water and sewer overview was to set a baseline, so the community would understand what we were dealing with for our water and sewer system. So, we will briefly touch on that on the 19th as we kick things off, just to kind of set that baseline again and move forward. But there's no way staff can assure council that every single time, we shall have a recording of this meeting, because it's, there's human error, there's electronical error, so we do the best we can with what we have to operate.
Do you need a motion to revise that ordinance, to give you direction to do that?
If council wants me to bring it back for consideration, I can do that. I have several ordinances on the board that need to be reviewed.
If we could possibly change it to state best effort type thing.
I can get it to Carvin for his input on that, so that he can make sure that it mirrors what we legally have to do. But I think that's a pretty high bar that no city is going to be able to meet.
Now, this equipment that we do have, as I recall, it was pretty expensive, and that's, this is about the same time this ordinance was passed, about the same time. Mr. Reese, and I believe he made the motion, and Josh McKay seconded, and you were on the council, Michelle Ty, so everybody voted on it. But I think this was put into place after we got this new electronic equipment, and it was pretty expensive. And so, my other question is, do we have, is there any kind of warranty to cover some of this malfunction? Or can we arrange for backup years ago, before we had this system, the, it was video or audio recorded, and then you could just call, you could do an open record and get the audio of the, of the meeting?
That's certainly a council's direction. However, there are multiple systems out there that will handle this for us through a third party that are professionally trained in this service. They also make it so much easier for your end user to go directly to the topic that they want to hear, instead of having to sit through hours. I mean, we're an hour into this one, and we haven't even hit the meat of the meeting at this point. So, that's something that council may want to consider at some junction, that we need to upgrade our equipment. Technology ages quickly, and it ages out quickly. And so, if we put this in in '21, it's coming up on four, five years old, it might be something to look at at that point.
Is that something that y'all can kind of start looking into and see how much that would cost?
Sure can.
I have concerns with that until we, until we get big enough to where we can have an IT department or someone to support, unless we're going to put the funds and allocate funds to contract it out, it seems like a mute point. We do the very best we can with what we have.
Yes, and there are vendors that will handle it, but we do not have an IT department. And you don't have that technical ability in your staff, because we're not large enough for that.
But that third-party vendor would take care of the IT that we don't have, is that correct?
They can, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we revise ordinance number, Amanda.
Two, zero, two, one, dash, zero, three.
Thank you. To remove the part that says "shall provide a video recording," and to say something in the effect of best effort, something like that, with Carvin's approval.
And second?
I'll second that.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Very good. All right, and number 10, I know we've already got it up here about the first day to sign up, replacing the ballot. I wanted to get election updates for May the 4th, 2024. You want to add, you want to address that?
Is there a question?
Yeah, I wanted to know what the, we've got the mayor's seat and then two council seats that are going to be available, and I believe the rollback election will also be in the election.
Yes, we've discussed that.
Okay. Well, I know, and I know these meetings are for the council to discuss, but, you know, folks in town don't know anything about what's going on unless they hear it at a council meeting.
But we've said it at the council meeting, I believe.
And we put it on the website and social media and pretty much any other venue that we have available to us, yes.
All right. Eleven, do you have anything else to add, Mrs. Ty?
Okay, very good. And so, we'll go to number 12, posting of election signs.
So, this item is not prepared for council approval or review this evening. However, I want to update you, there has been a change in state law that there is a, we have had some issues with people posting signs more than 30 days before the actual election date, and Rome has an ordinance that requires, or limits that, should I say, to 30 days before the election date, which is the May date. So, I have fielded some conversations or had some conversations with residents, so that I have updated them as to what those requirements are. We've also contacted those who are running for countywide office or statewide or even nationwide office and asked them to be mindful of the ordinance as it exists. But there has been a change in the square footage of the sign. Our ordinance says 32, it's supposed to say 36, so Carvin's office has updated that for us, and will be bringing that forward either at the 25th or the first meeting in February for you all to review. It's simply a housekeeping issue. We had hoped to have it ready for tonight's meeting, we just did not meet that deadline with Carvin being out of pocket, et cetera.
Any comments or questions? Very good. Number 13, fiscal year 2022 audits, also city administrator.
Thank you. So, this has been a long-awaited and a very hard-fought process to get us where we are today. I hope Matt Davis is still on the line, it looks like he is. So, he is a representative with MWH Accounting Services out of Wichita Falls. He is our third-party or independent auditor, as you will. You all have been provided the audit, the audit has also been uploaded to the website. It is also on the front page of the website, because we have had several people also discussing the audit and the delay in this process from the standpoint of getting this completed. So, I'm hopeful that Mr. Davis can shed some light on that and answer any questions you all may have. So, we're going to turn it over to him.
Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me?
Are you muted, sir? We cannot hear you.
I am not showing mute. Can y'all hear me now?
This is a good example of some of the limits of the technology that we have now. Go-to meeting is really not widely used by cities to a great extent. I mean, it can be used, but there are others that are a little more user-friendly.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead and mute your.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. How are y'all? So, as Amanda stated, we are presenting the fiscal year 2022 financial statements. We began this process back in August, September timeframe, is whenever Ms. Debbie Piper, the consultant, had everything ready for us. And working with her and Amanda and Shayna and staff, we were able to get through this and get it presented today. We worked through a few things. There were some things that Debbie had found and had worked through that were time-consuming, and at the, we were pretty much done about the middle of December, and when we were reviewing it, we had one item come up that you'll find in your financial statements. The city had received $1 million in 2022 for a rolling B agreement, which was a water agreement, and so there was just a classification on that. That was really the, actually, the only finding that we had during the audit. And like I said, Debbie Piper had done a great job, the city had done a great job in putting everything together and providing us what we needed for our audit testing. That was just something, it was a material adjustment, and it was just needed for the purposes of how we're required to report that for financial statement purposes. I would like to note that the city did receive a unmodified opinion, and basically, just what that means is that's the best opinion that you can get, where there were no suspected fraud or misstatements, and everything appears appropriate. And as Amanda stated, y'all did receive their report, I'd be happy to go through that with y'all, if y'all like it for me, too. Just to kind of hit on some major of the financial updates, the city did have for 2022, which I know we're talking about old numbers, a statement of net position of $5.8 million, which was an increase of $1.2 million over the previous year. And at September 30, 2022, they had $2.4 million in unrestricted funds that can be used to meet the government's ongoing obligations.
For those non-financial folks, that's great news for us.
The city's largest debt, which I know that if you look at the statements, the assets obviously are greater than liabilities, which again, is great news. There is quite a bit in long-term liabilities, however, that is primarily one debt-related issue for the utility fund, the enterprise fund, and that is for that go refunding bond. Aside from that, I mean, everything right in 2022, revenues were greater than expenditures, so that's what attributed to that increase in net position.
So, if you will look or if you recall your agenda commentary, one of the things that we worked on as part of this audit with MWH and with the consultants that we retained, and I've discussed with you several times at previous council members, that we had some straightening to do of our finances. We had several bank accounts open at the two different banks within the city, 20-plus over the years, and we were able to move that into what's called a consolidated cash account. And I know that we've had some folks have questions about that as well, but it's basically just a large umbrella, that we have one account with all of our funds underneath. We were also able to establish separate funds, so that we could easily track things such as our hotel motel monies, our Rome beautification funds, the grants, the several different restricted funds that are associated with the municipal court, the police seizure fund, the $1 million that we received from RVR, PMB, from the standpoint of reserving water capacity, et cetera. Some of this we will go over when we talk about the amendments for FY23. But all of that work that the consultants did on behalf of the city of Rome has set us in a great position for not only the FY23 audit, but in determining from the standpoint of where we sit financially and how many days we have in reserve. So, you will recall me mentioning to you all that when I was hired and I took a look at the financials, I did not see a clear indication of how much money we had set aside in our general fund as a reserve account, meaning if a catastrophe happened or the economy collapsed, how much money does Rome has in reserve from which to fund services before we need to be particularly concerned? So, we're getting very close to that, once the FY23, I mean, we know for FY24 what that number is, as you heard Matt say, we had a $1 million surplus of revenues over expenditures. Some of those restricted, some of those not, but that is great news for the city. I know there's been some conversations about Rome running pretty close to the edge of revenues and expenditures matching and us not having any type of reserves, but that is not the case. Also, receiving an unmodified opinion is wonderful for the city as well, because they do come in and they conduct onsite visits where they review and they pull documents in order to audit those. And that's what's so important, because the auditor that you see on the screen is the council's auditor. He does not work for staff, he works for council. And so, if you all have any questions as it relates to anything in that 54-page report, this is the time to ask. They will also hopefully be back within the next several meetings to present the 23 numbers, which we can then use moving forward for the next budget, and we'll have a very solid footing on where our finances are. I'm very, very pleased with the work that we've done thus far and the alignment of both the internal systems, our bank reconciliations, our audit work papers, our audit documents. And as we talk about the departmental amendments this evening, you all will start to see that we do have those fund balances established for many of these funds, and we've made great strides on our financial transparency as well as reporting for council. The next step will be to provide council with quarterly reports as it relates to your financials, so you're seeing how the budget is going throughout the year. And then we will make mid-year and end-of-year adjustments. So, just setting kind of the stage for the discussion and the report that you have, that Matt is, he and his team were great to work with, they spent at least one full day in the office with us, and we've exchanged emails back and forth and provided documents, and he's worked very closely with both Ms. Piper and Ms. Brown, the consultants that we hired to help us with on the Rome side. How's that, Matt? Did we sum that up pretty well?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're not going bankrupt?
And I would like to note that on the balance sheet for the general fund, there is 1.6 million in unassigned fund balance, and for 2022, the general fund had just over a mil, $2 million in expense.
Yeah.
So, that leaves you about eight or nine months in reserve.
And if you'll recall, the minimum I like us to see is four. So, when we're talking on the 19th about capital and improvements and other things, then this will be part of our discussion. And one of the things that I think council's not had in the past, or at least I couldn't readily find in our financials, is what is your capacity to fund this? It is rumored that Rome's going broke, and we're broke all the time, and we don't have any money, and we're hugely in debt, but that's really not the case for the city. And so, now we have a clear understanding of what do we have in reserves and what do we have cash on hand that could be used to fund some projects that may fix that, those old clay pipes in part of Old Town, that might be matching funds for grants if we receive any of those, because it often comes with that. And I do expect the 23 numbers to also show a surplus. We're not there yet, but we're moving as quickly as we can. Any other questions for Matt?
I just, a real quick one about material weakness here on the very back, about have we come up with a way to, it was related to the money we got from PMB, I presume, about $1 million, and there was something towards the front also that talked about somehow or another, it was not being unearned revenue, but it was adjusting journal entries. And then towards the end, it had material weaknesses, which was related to revenue recognition for developer contribution. And recommendations, we recommend that the city analyze unusual transactions during the year to determine if they are properly recorded in the general ledger. So, are we, where are we with that? Are we taking action to try to account for that money?
We've already done that.
Was that the, so the auditor's aware of that, but identified it?
I see, if you read further down on page 15, it has the cause and effect.
I see if you read further down on page 15, it has the cause and effect and the recommendations.
15 or 50?
50, five zero, the same page that you're on.
Right.
The recommendations that the city analyze unusual transactions during the year to determine if they are properly recorded in the general ledger. And the response is that the city is aware of the proper recordings for such contributions and has modified the year in close process to ensure all unusual items are reviewed and adjusted as necessary. So it appears that that's been addressed.
Okay.
And I also see a JV entry where they corrected it.
Yes, we corrected it on our side and I believe that it's the intention that Amanda and Debbie will adjust it on the city's side.
That is correct.
That is just an adjustment for financial reporting purposes since that the city received that $1 million, but it was not spent towards what it was designed for. That's why we had to reclassify it as unearned revenue because it's not revenue that has been currently used by the city at this time, as of the not 30, 2022.
It appears that this is a very thorough audit and I know that a great deal of time has been put in by city staff in addition to the MWH group and Matt. So I just want to say thank you. And so that it's, I would also like it included in the minutes, part of what it says in this letter, there's a part that says difficulties encountered in performing the audit. And it specifically says, we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing our audit. And we are pleased to report that no disagreements with management arose during the course of our audit. And I just appreciate so much the transparency in the staff in working with the auditors to make sure that this was done and done correctly and the time that it took to do it. So thank you.
Thank you. My philosophy on any of our city funds is this is money that's entrusted to the government. It is not our money. It is on behalf of the residents. And until the budget, the audit, and the financial forecasting is done well, it's very difficult for council to make any decision because you don't know what you have. You don't know what you can spend without putting the community in some sort of a financial position that they don't want to be in. And none of us want to have to look someone in the face and say we didn't manage the money well. So this is one of my highest priorities as a city manager, and it is something that within 30 days of coming in, I had already identified as something we needed to move forward. It's just taken us a while to get all of those accounts amalgamated and get those things straightened so that it could be properly reported to the auditors and you could have this information back on behalf of the city. Any other questions?
Okay, so done deal. Do you need, I don't think you need any action.
It's a report to council. Is that correct, Matt? Do they need to make a motion to accept the audit or what do you see?
No, ma'am. No, no action is really taken by council.
Thank you, sir. And we appreciate you staying on the call with us that extra hour. It's very nice to get this one under our belt and we look forward to seeing you for the 23 as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Number 14, Police Department General Orders. That is Eric Debus. And I'd asked this to be tabled the last round because I had not, this is 500 pages and I still have not finished it with the holidays and everything. I've still not finished it. So, but that's, it's up to the council.
I didn't see an issue with that. This is just, you've had the police general orders already. You just, you just kind of revamped them so that they would be?
Not exactly. So the general orders that was in place when I came on board was thin, for lack of a better term. It was not anywhere near best practices or getting us on the road toward recognition by the Texas Police Chiefs Association. And that was one of the mandates of the hiring board, I think you were on, that said, you know, best practices and recognition by TPCA was very important to the city as it is to me. This was one step. And the way this worked is in law enforcement, you don't write a brand-new general orders manual. You find a similarly situated city, you adopt theirs and then you change it to fit yours. And even though that sounds like it's an easy process, it took us over a year to do and worked on it diligently for over a year. And so the way that process worked is I adopted this other city's general orders and then went one by one and adjusted it to make it fit to the way we do things here in Rome, but stay within that best practice model. Once I went through it, then it was turned over to my sergeants and they looked at it. They made their adjustments, kicked it back to me. I made the final adjustments. And then once when the entire manual was completed, it was sent off to the attorney's toes. And they have experts in this field. I was really astonished that they came back and they really only did, they made a handful of grammatical changes, but there were only two, maybe three, I believe, policies that they totally changed to bring it into an update to be more in line with new legislation. So I was excited about that, that there weren't substantial changes that had to be made. So once they got it back to us, then it was assembled, then it was put together, sent to you guys. So it's been through all the reviews and I'm just looking for y'all to say, yes, we want to implement this new general orders manual for the police department.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to accept the police general orders.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did anybody actually read it?
I do have a couple of small items, but it's not material to the whole content. I could just show it to you.
And most of it, like I said, we went through our Texas best practice audit this year, actually last month, and everything, it's, it gets really dry because it lines up very close with ours. So everything looked great.
All right, number 15, fiscal year 2023 budget amendments. Thank you, Mayor. While we're waiting for the presentation to come up, because I think this will be very helpful for council and for those in the audience to see, I am, as I mentioned, as part of the FY22 audit, I am very pleased with the way the 23-year ended as well. And I'd like to walk us through some of this. Now, the 23 audit, of course, is not done, so we're going to hold this loosely until they are able to audit and report back to you, just as they did this evening on the 22 numbers. But one of the things that we have discussed over the past several months is all that work that we have reviewed going back several meetings about the alignment of our internal processes and systems. All those funds that you saw come out in the audit are now aligned by general fund, which is your general operating fund or your main checking, if you will, for the city. The fire and EMS fund, which is held separately apart from the general fund, same thing for the parks fund. And of course, we have the utility water wastewater fund, which is the water sewer portion, which is an enterprise fund, and it is designed to be self-supporting. We should not be transferring money from general fund into utility fund to pay for those operations. We also have a debt service fund, so we moved all of the debt from the departments into one fund, so you can clearly see all of the obligated debt for the city. We've also segregated out all the restricted funds. We have hotel motel money that we receive each month or each quarter that can only be used for certain purposes. We have a Rome beautification fund that I believe two residents donate to each month and we are tracking that because it's meant to be used for a particular use as well. We now have a grants fund where all of the grants are shown within that particular fund instead of broken up in each department to make it easier to see and track. Municipal court itself has several restricted funds as it relates to how those can be used. One is for truancy, one is for building security, technology, and another one for jury reimbursement. And we have a police Caesar Fund. So all of those are now notated clearly in your budget document as well as in the supporting line item information that you were provided this evening for this item. All transfers in and out from general fund to one of these other funds, specifically fire EMS fund and parks fund are clearly noted as well. We also have new GL account codes. So in your supporting information, you will see in red either changes to a description on an account or changes to that GL account code so that as our finance and accounting specialist is making those journal entries, she knows clearly where to put things and how to move them through the system itself. We've also shown the revenue that we've received from the City of Aurora as part of the police department's revenue and the expenditures that go along with that. The PMB funds for both fire and police personnel are also now noted in each of their respective departments. And we do show the $1 million that was discussed in the FY22 audit on our audit work papers and on our balance sheets. It is not shown in your budget because it is not budgeted to be spent until council authorizes the funds. Once that occurs, you see, and as we get to water sewer, I will, I will show you where we moved it into revenue and then we expended it down below. But because it is not an annual expenditure and that is something that has got a particular restricted use, it is shown on your balance sheets, but not in your yearly budget. Let's see, I think that's it for this slide, sir. Would you go ahead to general fund? So looking at the departmental level, which is really where council needs to be focusing their efforts, you see that administration had a 16% increase in revenue that they received in FY23 for actual numbers that I have been able, now these are unaudited, but they don't change much from that standpoint. The majority of that money comes from sales tax revenue for us in this year. You will see that that, we budgeted 1.7 million, we actually received just over 2 million in revenue. And the only reason that's attributed to administration is because that's kind of the umbrella from which any other revenue that's not associated with a specific department falls in administration. You will see that development had a 5% increase from 109 to 114. While that's not a lot, it is very good that we are meeting those targets. This comes from the majority of our permits and code revenue for a variety of things that we are having built. We do receive permit money from, there are inspections, there are other permits that we receive for repairs, for renovations, et cetera. And so it all is gone, it goes into the development department. There were decreases in revenue in municipal courts. That is to be expected. As you all know, municipal court is not meant to be a revenue generating department, although often it is. It is wholly driven by the citations that are written. Not only that, but the way defendants choose to handle their cases. That has changed significantly in the last 15 to 20 years. And municipal courts are more facilitators. They're not so much looking to just process the number of citations. So they've done a really good job of managing not only their revenue, but their expenditures. Police is also down 3%. However, that is not something that is directly attributable to the department, if you will. There is an amount of money that should have been billed or should have been paid by PMB Capital for $15,000 as part of their contractual obligation in the last fiscal year that has not been remitted to the city yet. So as part of the audit process and as a part of the budgeting work that I've done in the past year, we have created an invoice for PMB and we have sent that to them for not only anything that was missing from our contractual obligation in the last year, but we've also billed them for what they owe us thus far in the FY24 year. So when you look at that in total, and it's pretty easy to look at the percentage column and just go down and either add or subtract, but that's really not appropriate because it's, the numbers under administration, development, court, and police are dependent upon those line items. But when you look overall in general fund, we had a 10% increase in revenue over what was budgeted for approximately $267,000, which is good news for the City of Rome as well. Any questions on this slide? So moving to the expenditures review, the department, and you look at administration is 3% under what they budgeted. So that means they spent less than what was budgeted in, what was allocated by council, which is approximately $10,000. Most of that is in dues and subscriptions or contract labor and insurance. Medical and dental came in a little bit lower. Some of that is because we did have a vacancy in my position for the first part of this fiscal year. So there was a little bit of savings in that area. Development was 61% under, and that can be directly attributed to the funds that we did not expend on any project for roads repair. So we have approximately 112, I believe, in road repair that was left in that budget. And then the rest of it is for those engineering costs associated with those road repairs. So while that looks great, it also means we didn't, we didn't perform any project on behalf of the city for maintaining that part of our infrastructure. You will also see that in the negative column, which is what we want to see here, that the transfer out to fire and EMS, there is a certain portion of general fund that is moved to fire and EMS to help support that service delivery was under as well by 67%. That is due to the income that we received from PMB as well as the fact that we did not have a fire chief in position for the entirety of the year. And we had other vacancies as it relates to part-time firefighters that was also not funded. We covered it with overtime, but we are still within our budget numbers. So if you look at the departments that are slightly over in expenditures, municipal court is over, but that is due to their state requirements. For each citation that's paid on behalf of a defendant, they're required to pay state taxes, which we then remit to the state of Texas. We don't have any control over that, and so it's going to fluctuate up and down. We do our best to predict that number, but that actually came in over this year as well as legal fees. Now, legal fees for the municipal court are a little different because all of those fees are driven by whether a defendant chooses to plead not guilty for the most part and take their case to trial. If they do, the prosecutor is required, we need to bring them in to adjudicate that case with the defendant. And so that's also not something within that department's control. It is wholly dependent on the defendant to drive that direction, if you will. Police is 2% over, and that's because we had a delay in the delivery of the new cars for that department. So we were required to spend additional money to upkeep the old and ailing fleet that we had. We're very happy to have those new ones in, so we won't have that issue hopefully this year. We also had additional charges and insurance for medical and dental, and that is driven at the employee discretion from the standpoint of what they choose for their elections. The transfers out to parks was 33% over, but don't hold that loosely because if you look at that, that's from, it was budgeted to transfer 48,000, but then in the parks department, it only showed an inflow of 18,000. So we had a disconnect there and we actually ended up only transferring about 22,000 to the parks department. So 33% looks like a lot, but when you look at the actual numbers and the movement therein, there's not that much of a delta. Now, looking at that bottom line for the total, I'm happy to report that overall for all of those funds, expenditures were under the budgeted amount by 9%. So that's also good news for the City of Rome. We stayed well within budget at that, at that departmental level. Drilling down on the fire and EMS fund, this is where I was telling you that this fund is meant to, you're supposed to see zero in the actual when you look at the total. We don't want to transfer more out of general fund than we need to. They do have their own sets of revenue streams. They were also able to significantly curtail their expenditures by $53,000. You do see that their revenue was under by 146,000. However, I will preface that with PMB Capital owes us $80,000 for the firefighter that we employed last year. It, in that audit of that particular contractual obligation, we noted that it had not been paid on behalf of, so we have sent them an invoice for that as well. The issue will come that we're not going to realize it in this FY23 fiscal year. It will be realized in '24. So you will see a corresponding overage in revenue for the next year versus what we have this year, but at least we do have that invoice out and we are in conversation with them about getting that paid. We also only conducted one fill-the-boot drive this year. That is something that Chief Estes would prefer rather than do that twice a year just once, so that was slightly under. But all in all, the department did very well with both their revenue and expenditures. So then looking at the parks fund, this is where I show that we had revenue was going to come in at 48,000. We only transferred 25 to give that as well as zero balance. We currently do not have a parks board that is meeting, so basic repairs were done on that particular facility. We did purchase two new mowers for the parks and I would like to give a shout out to Mr. Dominguez. We did have one mower in there that we had priced previously that was pretty expensive and he was able to negotiate two mowers for the price of what we had budgeted. And so he did an excellent job in stretching those dollars where they needed to go. So thank you, sir, for doing that because the new mowers work great and the guys are very happy with them and the park looks good and so do the other areas that they have been looking to keep up. Now, as we resurrect the parks board and as we start to look at events within the community and things that we're going to do, I would expect this budget to change. I would expect council to allocate funds to this to pay for those. That will also be part of our budget conversations as we go through the rest of this year because this is something that we did hear from residents that they would like to see. And so council will have to decide what makes sense and where do we want to use those funds. So then moving to the utility water and wastewater fund, you will see that they also did very well. However, I am going to caution you on some of Uh, however, I am going to caution you on some of these numbers. You will see that utility fund at that top, when you look at the chart at the top, it does appear as if they had $323,000 to the good. But when you go and you look at your line item backup information, the first three lines of that department need to be held loosely because that is not budgeted revenue and it affected these numbers. So when you control for those first three line items, their actual revenue over expenditures was only 41,000. So there's not a deep pocket in water and sewer, uh, but we are at least holding our own at the moment. Uh, we did have some budget line items that we underspent in, mostly salary and wages due to the vacant director position that we have now filled. We also had some engineering fees. As I mentioned before, we did not have any city-based projects, so we did not really expend a lot of those. Council had also allocated $50,000 for building repairs for both police, fire and public works. And the public works department used about half of that, so they, they did have some savings there. We had some water capacity projects with Walnut Creek, with P and B, as mentioned. And in your line items, you will see that we had a $223,000 expenditure for upgrade to a, a water line that's really more of a pump upgrade and SCADA upgrades as it relates to the system itself. So out of the million dollars that we received from P and B, we've spent about 250,000 of that. 75,000 the city used out of that 1 million to pay for our contractual obligation to gain the additional capacity from Walnut Creek as well as to extend the contract. P and B paid us $75,000, so they split the $150,000 fee to Walnut Creek with us. And then we spent about $137,000 on the SCADA upgrades, which the gentlemen are so pleased with because it allows them to monitor all of our water systems remotely. It gives them notifications as soon as we have a significant spike in use, et cetera, and it allows them to manage our system a lot better as well as it is cloud-based. Because before we had it on a single desktop in public works and that was the only system. If it went down, it was probably going to take us a couple of days to get it back up. So that was a very, very good use of those funds. So they did good in that department as well. I would just caution you to look at those numbers through the lens of controlling for those first three revenue line items because that's not traditional revenue that we would expect for that department each year. So then looking at the debt funds, you will see that those were broken out to INS, interest and property tax, the 2016 general obligation bond, the 2017 tax anticipation note that we have. We have notes out for administration and PD purchases. We have the pumper truck that's still left that we haven't paid, the new police vehicles, three of those. Uh, what you may recall, excuse me, is that P and B purchased one of those outright. That revenue is noted in the police department's budget as well as that expenditure, so it is properly accounted for. And then we have interest on various notes as it relates to the budget. We are very fortunate, as I have stated to you all before, to have a very low debt rate for a city that has as much going on as we have. We will have to consider that as we move forward, but we are also very blessed to have a very good credit rating, which if and when we go to issue bonds, that would help us tremendously in the market. So the debt funds and the breakout that you see here and on the next slide with the restricted funds is wholly due to the consultants that we hired. When I came in, this information was not clearly notated in Rome's budget. So this is some great progress on our budget as it relates to transparency for the community. So they can see, oh, the city has a debt fund and here it is all listed, the debts that they paid. So I'm very, very pleased with what they've done. I also will tell you that it has set us up well for the '23 audit because a lot of the hard work was done in the '22 to get that all aligned. So we anticipate that that will go a lot quicker. I will not have it done by January, which is what's required in our ordinance and state law. However, we are pushing that as fast as we can go. It will not be a year, I will tell you that. Um, I'm anticipating that the first part of March, uh, second meeting in March at the latest is what I'm shooting for to get that report back to you. So then looking now at the restricted funds, you will see that one of the things I have talked to you many times in the past year is how do we get to the fund balance for these funds? So we know what capacity and what reserves and/or where do we have some ability from which to invest back in the community? So you will see that in the FY22, excuse me, this should say revenue for FY23, but for the FY23 year, you will see in that first column, this is the money that we collected in each of these restricted funds. The fund balance is what I took from the FY22 audit that was reported in the work papers. So I expect these to go up in the FY23 audit. But one of the things I want you to note is the first one there that talks about the hotel motel tax or the hot mo. We receive funds for each room rented at the hotel on a semi-quarterly basis. We have audited that fund to see if we have received everything that we are supposed to be receiving. Uh, I do believe there's some conversation with the hotel owner about making sure that his numbers align with state numbers and with our numbers, so we're finishing that out. But at current, it does show a balance in that restricted fund of $116,000. One of the things that we could consider, because this has a very specific use, is reinvesting potentially in the community, either through events that may draw people to the community. One of the things that's also been discussed is could we hire someone to paint a mural on the back of that, what used to be a gas station at the corner of I think 3433 and, yeah, that one. So we would potentially, we've been in conversation with that owner about cleaning that up and he's been very receptive. But that sure would be a neat way to welcome people to the city of Rome. If we looked at our Rome history book and we had a mural artist recreate a mural on the back about the things that started the community, much like Bridgeport has done with their stagecoach branding. We could do something like that for Rome, which would really be a beautiful entrance into the community. So council does have some funds that could be allocated for that if you so choose and this will be part of our conversations moving forward. As I mentioned to you, the beautification fund, only $29 in the last fiscal year, but it does have a balance of almost 1,200. So if we decided to do something at the park for plants or flowers, we could do something like that. Um, just something to consider. Grant funds, it shows revenue in and it varies. This is a little misleading because the ARPA funds were received in previous fiscal years, so there is more money in grants than we expect, but this is just what we took in for this year. If you look down at truancy, building, security, technology and jury, those are all the court restricted funds and can only be used for court-related purposes or the building that houses the municipal court. And of course, the police seizure fund, excuse me, is shown there on the bottom. So, what we're looking for this evening is council direction to adopt at the departmental level, the final numbers for revenues and expenditures that you have in your agenda commentary that was provided to you as well as that you have seen in this slide deck and we have discussed this evening. I've noted the changes in your backup information to the GL account codes as well as the descriptions for each account that we have, we would like to see approved in order to align, continue to align our internal processes and our budget with our audit information. You will know that the numbers shown for the general fund and utility fund at, are unaudited. But as we speak, those work papers are being put together. They will be sent to the auditing firm, just like you saw tonight, and you will get a report for FY2023. That is about all I have. Um, one thing that we do or may want to consider in the future, we currently have an accounting specialist on staff. If Rome ever would like to look at investing in someone who is a true CPA for the budget, not recommending it at the moment, but that is something for council to be mindful of in the future because we are starting to be pretty financially complex and we need to make sure that we are properly documenting everything, that we have all of the folks on staff that we need in order to make sure we're doing the best for the community that we can because the finances are the foundation of everything we do. Your budget document is literally a policy document that you pass each year on behalf of the community. That sets our spending authority, that gives us direction, that sets your goals and objectives to some extent for what you're looking for in the community. So that is something that we may want to consider in a five-year personnel forecast. If in two years or in one year, whatever makes sense to council, that we may want to consider hiring a finance director or CPA on staff. So just putting that out there for further discussion. But all in all, I'm very pleased with the way the FY23 budget turned out. I think that the staff has done, they've done an excellent job of maintaining the resources that they've been given in trying times as well as under some fairly intense scrutiny. The community is very interested in their finances and what goes on in Rome as they should be. So they've done a good job within those parameters and answering those questions and providing the services. And it will be up to council this year and incoming budget years to determine how we're going to reinvest in everything that we know Rome can be and how we move forward because that's your next step. Any questions on the presentation?
Does it need to, do we need to make a motion to accept?
You have an ordinance, yes, that would need to be approved as it relates to FY23 budget amendment.
I make a motion to accept the fiscal year 2023 budget amendments and ordinance.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Organizational update. I'd like to table that one, mayor, with the electricity going off and on today. I didn't get a chance to finish that presentation, so I can either bring it forward in February or we can bring it forward at another time. Okay. Uh, 17 liquor laws inside city limits, that's, um, Michelle Tyne.
So with all this growth coming, I know that restaurants are going to be coming out here and I know those restaurants are probably going to have bars in them or serve some sort of alcohol. So I wanted to figure out what our liquor laws were within the city limits. And we found two elections that were held. One was in 2002 and one was in 2011. I've got copies here. But it's very confusing and we might need, um, Carvin to kind of speak on it.
So when we were scanning in, so when we were scanning in some of the documents, we actually found the September 8th, 2021, we found the documents for that. And this is where I was talking with Ms. Odom about the fact that it does say that an election was held 96 for, 53 against. It's now wet for the sale of all alcoholic beverages, including mixed beverages. And so I'm a little confused by this as well. I'll, I'll be honest, I've not been down this road of elec- elections for this, so it's a new path for me. However, I don't know if that means that like El Cezanne could serve margaritas with the Mexican food, but that's something if council wants to look at. Knowing what I know about development, you will have residents, excuse me, not residents, you have businesses come in here who will ask that question.
Yes, and El Cezanne, they asked that question too. They're getting, their landlords raising the rent on their restaurant and they're not making any more money except what they're serving. And so they're like, we would like to start serving alcohol too, but that's why I wanted to bring this to council to try and discuss and see where, where we are and if we needed to hold an election.
So if council wants to provide direction to staff, I can research this with Mr. Atkins and see what he makes of these two elections and then I'm sure he could bring a report back to you all.
Yeah, I would like that.
Am I reading this correctly, that it's the part about off-premises consumption?
So that's where it gets confusing because when you look at the 2011 election, it, it seems to limit what was done in 2001 unless I'm just reading this wrong. And I, and I'll be honest, I don't have any experience in this area, so I'd need to definitely ask Carvin.
Okay.
All right, number 18, parking on the street. That's Mr. Johnson. So this is something that I've put on the agenda and Mr. Johnson hasn't probably had a moment to catch his breath, but this is something that council had discussed at a previous time. So I'm trying to get some parameters on when you would like something back and what general guidelines you'd like to give staff from to research. Because we've had some issues with parking in certain areas where people have brought up the fact that they want to park on the street and others do not. And I'm, I'm really not sure which way to go at this point.
Well, when I moved in, either it wasn't written into law or it was never enforced. So now all of a sudden, it seems to be an issue. It was a couple of years ago when they come through and said we can no longer park on the street. Streets are plenty wide, so I don't know what the issue is. I just want to be able to park on the street without getting a ticket.
So your ordinances are conflicting. They do need some cleaning up. And if you're wanting us to just take a look at that from that lens and bring it back to council with an analysis, we can do that. But it, this is kind of like animal control issues, it can get heated sometimes for folks. So we need to be prepared to be mindful of everyone's input as it relates to what we want to do because we don't want to create an undue burden. And I think one of the things that strikes me about Rome is Old Town has a different feel than some of your more structured neighbors and we might want to figure out somewhere in the middle. But that's just my opinion or recommendation to you all.
Yes, I think that we do need to look at the ordinances and make sure that they are for this, are the same. Um, I, I don't know what, what else other than to make sure fire trucks can get down the roads and emergency vehicles can get to wherever they need to go.
Mayor, would you mind turning off your microphone?
My head, uh, at the last time this came up at the meeting, I went and I drove around every neighborhood in the city with that in mind. And what I observed was that it's really a neighborhood standard from my point of view, rather than a city statewide standard. So, um, and of course I was going during the daytime, people at work were at work. I'm sure that changes in evening hours. So I, I just think that consideration of, it's more of a neighborhood unique issue versus an entire city, one size fits all. That's just my opinion.
But can we specify neighborhood by, oh, this neighborhood can do this, but this neighborhood can't do this. Can we do that?
That's a Carvin question.
Yeah.
And that, the, something we will definitely want to seek some legal direction on because in addition to this particular issue, you may have some folks who want to know why some areas are allowed to park on unimproved surface and some aren't. So that may come up in this conversation as well.
Yeah, and at least my impression was it'd be nice, it could be up to each individual neighborhood and they could make their own decisions, but I don't.
I'm also curious about the enforcement of that. You know, we've been down that road before with, um, I don't know, weeds or whatever it was.
Yes, we, we do have issues with weeds and enforcement in that area as well as the parking. And I think you are correct, it is somewhat of a neighborhood, by neighborhood standard, but it makes it difficult because we've got a couple of residents who are confused about the policy, the way that it's written. So we need to make sure we've got it clearly stated.
And Chief, briefly, can you tell us, I, I, I feel like I remember you saying at one time that you would not be ticketing.
That's correct. So as far as parking goes, Mr. Johnson, I, I, I completely agree with your thoughts. When I saw the ordinance was written that said you cannot park on the street, I immediately thought that's not really an enforceable ordinance because it's too, it's not specific enough to which streets. And to that point, you can, you can't, I don't think you could write an ordinance to say you can't park on the street in, in certain neighborhoods, but you could do it by, by street. You could name each street individually. Um, I've seen that done in the past or require certain permits to park on certain streets. Uh, because if you look at Red Bud compared to Sterling, you've got a lot, a, a, an incredible amount of, of distance between curbs on Sterling that you just don't have on Red Bud. Um, so to that point, yes. Now, we, we have not issued, we're not issuing parking citations in the residential areas. We are on, on freedom with the trucks that are blocking where they're not supposed to and it's clearly marked, but as far as residential goes, no, we're not enforcing the, the neighborhood parking. Um, as far as the code enforcement, we've been handling that for about a year and a half now. We, we are enforcing the high grass because of the associated environmental concerns we have with that. So we are absolutely targeting high grass in every neighborhood.
As far as the grass grows, I'd mow quite a bit for the neighbors. If I see it, I mow it. Most of them don't even know who's mowing. Don't, don't put my name out there, they pat me on the back. I see it, I don't want nobody in trouble. But I don't want after you've retired or But I don't want after you've retired or moved somewhere else, I don't want the next chief to come in and say, oh, look here, let's start writing tickets. That's why I want to get it resolved now.
We can certainly bring that back to you all for conversation, yes.
We make a motion?
Just need direction.
Okay. Would you please look at revising those ordinances?
Yes, we will do that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And number eight, number 19, Administration of Senior Center, and that's Mr. Loftus.
Yeah, and at this time, I think, is there an update on progress on quotes or anything for that?
No, sir, I think you'd asked me to move this to the 19th, and I may have missed it on this agenda, so I'm happy to put it to the 19th for that discussion.
That would be fine.
And number 20, Waste Connections Annual Increase.
So every year, our Waste Connections contract allows for a CPI increase. This year, that amount is 4.6%. What we need is a meeting minute notation of acceptance of that increase, but I will also bring to council's attention that they have also requested a 1% increase to cover the cost related to disposal, and it appears as if that's a discretionary increase. So it would be at council's discretion whether they want to approve the 5.6 total percent increase that they've asked for or stick with the 4.6 on the CPI. Does that make sense?
So the, the 4%, that's contractual, correct?
The 4.6% is, yes. They've asked for an additional 1% increase to cover the cost of disposing of all of the waste.
I guess my comment is more of a performance comment because from what I can tell.
Oh, are you, there you go, sir. There we go, perfect.
We've, we've been wondering who's that guy?
Hi, my name is Jeff Collins. I'm with Waste Connections. I'm the site manager. I'm Justin. We do service.
I'm sorry, tell me your name again, Jeff.
Jeff Collins.
Thank you.
Jeff Collins. All right. Now, you were about to say something before.
Yeah, my comment is more of a performance comment.
Okay.
It seems that maintenance on your trucks is leaving waste on our city streets, and then it gets dragged in by garage.
Are you the one that owns the motorcycle?
No.
I see you. Okay. So.
But I observe, I walk town every day almost, and I see oil stains left by your trucks on multiple occasions on different, different pickups.
So I can't account for all of the oil stains, as you know, every vehicle that has moving parts is on a leak. I do have one, I'll call him a knucklehead, that did not tell me that he was leaking, that he had a plus hydraulic leak, hose, and when hydraulic fluid sits for a little while, it'll have a darker stain on there that really can't come off of asphalt. So I did take, send several different types of crews, or types of crews, with different companies out to try to get the, the stains out as well as I can, but as far as the contaminants, the chemicals that are in the oil, they are taken out of those stains. When I found out, I did talk to that driver. He knows that if he ever does get an hydraulic leak, I need to contact him immediately and I will send him to prove out immediately for those said leaks.
Yeah, I mean, the presence of oil in the street probably preserves the street. However, it's prevention that is important and maintenance.
Yes, it's not that often maintenance or a maintenance team, hydraulic systems, they carry about 3,000 pounds of pressure in them. Hydraulic hoses are vulnerable first, unfortunately, it happens more often.
How often are these hoses inspected?
When they get displaced.
After they fail.
Correct.
Thank you.
And one thing I can say from the staff side, they've been very good to work with. When we've called them for any type of a leak or if there's been an issue, they've been very responsive, so I'm pleased with, with that service delivery. And I think at this point, if you could explain the difference in the 4.6 and the 1?
Right, so every time that comes out of, every load comes out of Rome goes to Denton and Mansfield. In October of last year, they increased the prices for any external companies other than the city of Denton, 4.2%. So I'm here to ask the city to help us with just a 1% increase, which would be an additional 23 cents on top of a CPI.
Now, is this something that you're going to start putting in your contracts or is this, you're just going to ask when they increase?
No, it's not going to be, it's always going to be that additional, do you have the, I can't remember the exact version, I'm not a legal guy, but it's under other operation, operational expenses. Our contracts have that where we are allowed to ask for a petition for an additional for those types of increases that we get.
I simply have the letter, Mr. Collins. I didn't bring the contract with us this evening.
I was about to go sit through, so I was hoping.
So I appreciate you using real numbers like 23 cents. So a 4.6% increase on the monthly, I'm sorry, my husband does that portions, I don't even know how much that is each month. Can you?
It's going to be 77 cents. The 4.6 is going to be 27 cents, or, Stevie, 77 cents.
So all total, a dollar increase per month to every homeowner who has.
Yes, ma'am.
Waste services.
Will your drivers start picking up a bag sitting beside the trash can?
Unfortunately, we are car content only in Rome, other than your one-day pickup versus pickup.
I'll also just give you a little background. My previous city went from twice a day pickup to once a day. We will not do that here. Well, excuse me, yeah, once a week. Yeah, it was a big, big issue. So we are fortunate that they still come through twice a week and pick up for us because that caused a big kerfuffle in my last city.
The night before New Year's Eve, they came by, I mean, it was like, it had to have been 7:30, 8 o'clock. It was pitch black outside and I just have, I heard them and I walked out and I was yelling at them, you know, God bless you guys, you could have picked it up tomorrow, but they were right, they stayed right with them. I just felt bad for them working so late.
I give my team kudos. We, me, the last few weeks have been.
That's what the kid said. He said, hey lady, you know, we don't have to work on Sunday.
So at this point, we need council direction?
You need direction or a vote for approval?
Well, which one do y'all want to go for? The 4.6 or add that 1%? The 23 cents?
I'm fine with all of it.
I'm giving 5. 4.6.
So it's a.
I just want to add a daily.
Total amount on the, on the water bill, on the increase in the water bill? What's the total amount?
A dollar.
A dollar. Okay.
77 plus 23, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'd just like to request daily inspections prior to leaving your facility of the hydraulic hoses.
Okay.
So. Every trucker has to do inspections of their equipment before they go out on the highway.
We have a pre-trip inspection before we go out. It is a DOT regulation. We do, we do do those, and that entails on moving the arms and all the hydraulics, all right? When a leak, when a leak happens en route, that's a different story, and that's what happens. We don't leave the yard with our trucks leaking. As far as the inspections for the hoses and everything, I misspoke. Those are called PMs. Those are done on an hourly basis based off how many hours those trucks were. And there's three types of different PMs, and those depend on how many hours that trucks were.
I trust you'll do better.
Okay. So started with the motion for the dollar increase.
Second?
Who had, I'm sorry, who had the motion? That was Michelle Tyne?
Well, I didn't motion, but I'll motion for the 5.6.
Well, it's a dollar, a total dollar per month, right?
5.6%.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Collins, thank you.
All right. Next up is executive session. With Carvin not being here, are we still doing that?
I think, Mayor, we can hold that till the 19th. I'm still waiting some documents from Prairie Point, but I'll add it to that agenda.
All right. Future agenda items? Anything? All right, then, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Gosh, we missed you. Second?
Aye.
Okay, just hold on to those and put them in the bucket, please. Okay, then it is 801?
We need a vote.
I'm sorry, vote.
Aye.
Very good. All right, 801, we're out of here.